Corporation Council, anyone who wishes to address the board, please sign up with the city sheriff. Please state your name and address for the record. There's a five-minute limit and I will give you a one-minute heads-up. Mr. Sheriff, call the first speaker.
Yeah, Mr. President, there's no residents that signed up for this.
Okay, is there anybody from out of town who signed up?
Yep, we have attorney David Bogan from Lock Lord LLP, 20 Church Street, Hartford, Connecticut.
Okay. Unless there's an objection, I know normally we only, we limit this to those who are city residents or city taxpayers, but Mr. Vermonti does represent the companies that would have an interest in this, and I think it's probably in our best interest to allow him to address us at the public hearing, so if there's no objection, I will allow that to happen. Speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay, attorney Bogan.
Thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate the accommodation. I do have-
Would you just state your name and address-
Sure, David Bogan, B-O-G-A-N. I'm a lawyer with the law firm of Lock Lord, 20 Church Street in Hartford. I do have written copies of my testimony as well as a copy that was sent on behalf of my client to the president, if I may-
Okay. If you just give them to the sheriff, he'll get them up to us, so-
I'm here tonight on behalf of CTIA. CTIA is the trade association for the wireless communications industry, and I'm here to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance. As proposed, the ordinance would place a moratorium on the installation and relocation of wireless facilities in the public rights of where. If passed, the ordinance has the potential to result in significant economic harm to the city and prevents or significantly delay the city's ability to provide enhanced public safety services such as next-generation 911 service or other smart city services, including smart traffic lights, smart parking, and many others. It would also hamper the industry's ability to provide wireless services to your constituents. Moreover, the proposed ordinance appears to be based on a mistaken understanding of action taken by the state legislature last session, and is in stark conflict with both state and federal law. I probably don't need to tell you the demand for wireless services is exploding every day, with nearly new devices and technologies coming online daily. Data use alone has increased by over 238% in the last two years. Traditional cell towers remain a significant portion of our network, but they have to be augmented by what are called small cells if we're going to meet the demand for increased capacity and coverage. More importantly, small cells are necessary to serve as the platform for the next generation of wireless known as 5G. Small cells are wireless antennas that are typically installed on existing structures such as utility poles, streetlights, and traffic signals. Even when small cells require new poles, those poles take the form of utility poles and not the traditional cell site you've grown accustomed to. A policy that would ban the installation of those facilities means that we would be creating or exacerbating a problem of inadequate coverage. This would affect the city's ability to attract much-needed capital and also our ability to serve your customers. Global smart city economic benefits are estimated to be anywhere between $644 billion and $1.2 trillion by 2025. Now, I mentioned that the proposed ordinance also seems to have a mistaken understanding of legislative action last session, and that is that, as I read the purposes, it references Committee Bill 536 and states that the Connecticut Siting Council has been tasked to do a study by January 1 for a statewide plan. However, that proposed legislation did not pass. However, it did result in a docket by the Public Utilities Regulatory Authority which instituted new procedural safeguards for municipal input. The PURA decision acknowledged three levels of jurisdiction for the placement of small cells. Small cell antennas on existing electric distribution poles are the subject of PURA's exclusive jurisdiction. New poles are the subject of the Siting Council's jurisdiction, and any small cells that are proposed on municipal structures are the subject of municipal jurisdiction. The law is clear. The proposed ordinance would violate those state jurisdictional prohibitions.
One minute, attorney Bogan.
In addition, there are federal limitations on what states and local authorities can do. Specifically, the Telecommunications Act of 1996 says that states may not regulate the entry or enact laws that prohibit the ability of any entity to provide telecommunication service. Courts have clearly stated that that means that state and local governments are prohibited from barring wireless deployment. The blanket prohibition proposed by the proposed ordinance violates that federal law. In sum, we want to work with you. Your interests align with ours. We just want to serve your customers. However, in order to do it, we need forward-looking infrastructure regulations that promote and allow expeditious deployment of wireless facilities. Instead of implementing the ordinance, we would respectfully suggest that you engage the industry in an information session to educate yourselves as to what our needs are and how they can coalesce with your requirements. I thank you for your attention and your consideration.
Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker.
Thank you. With that, we'll close the public hearing and call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Monday, September 25, 2017. And I would just ask that everyone please keep in your prayers and your thoughts this week those who've been so seriously affected by all of the bad weather and the other issues that we've been facing, particularly those in Puerto Rico where we have a lot of families in Waterbury who are very worried about their families back home because they can't get in touch with them. So, I would ask that you keep all of those folks, both there and here, in your thoughts and in your prayers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a silent prayer.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Nelly.
Here.
Alderman Chiketti.
Here.
Alderwoman Cummings.
Presente.
Alderwoman Cato.
Presente.
Alderman DiGiobin Carlo.
Presente.
Alderman Giacomi.
Uh, presenta?[496.12][496.12](Laughter)
Alderman Guerrero.
Presente.
Alderman Hadley.
Presente.
Alderman Kula.
Presente.
Alderman Lopez.
Presente.
Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy.
Presente.
Alderman Napoli.
Presente.
Alderman Padola. Alderman Sherman.
Presente.
Alderman Pernarowski.
(Laughter) Presente, but I'm gonna be sure you all have looked up what that means before you-[528.87][528.87](Laughter)
Fourteen present and one absent.
Thank you, we have a quorum. With that, we'll go to public speaking. Anyone who wishes to address the board on any topic, please sign up with the city sheriff. Please state your name and address for the record, and again, there's a five-minute limit. I'll give you a one-minute heads-up. Mr. Sheriff.
First speaker tonight from 96 Windsor Street, Robert Dorr. Mr. President, thank you. My name is Robert G. Dorr. I live in a lovely house at 96 Windsor Street, Waterbury, and I'm a lifelong resident of Waterbury. For the past 17 years, I have been serving as the secretary of the Waterbury Veterans' Memorial Committee, and tonight I am seeking permission from this Board of Aldermen to install a bronze tablet in City Hall, the Chase Building, adjacent to the existing bronze tablets, which list the names of those men from Waterbury who have given their lives and service to our nation. Presently, there is a plaque for World War II, there is a bronze tablet for Korea, Vietnam, and tonight I'm proposing that you give the permission to the Waterbury Veterans Memorial Committee to install this plaque. This plaque says, "Dedicated to those from Waterbury who gave their lives in the global war on terrorism." It lists the six boys, six men from Waterbury who died in service to our country in Iraq and Afghanistan. This plaque will be paid for by contributions received from the Waterbury Veterans Memorial Committee, so it will be paid for from our funds. That is item number one on the agenda. Item number two is we seek permission to have the war memorial on the green inscribed with the latest conflicts that men from Waterbury have served in. There are no names on the green, but we seek permission to install on the green, to have the granite tablets inscribed with two additional conflicts that have, Waterbury men that have been involved in and have served in. One is Desert Storm, Desert Shield, and number two is the global war on terrorism. So with that, I thank you for your attention to this, and I'm happy to submit this to for your approval. And thanks. Next speaker from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. I won't be up here seven times tonight, so I can reassure everybody. I know everybody'd be happy, but I wasn't planning on coming tonight, but after reading things in the past week in the paper, and especially after what came out in the paper on Sunday, I felt a need to, you know, I thought it was a total disgrace of an individual to go out to the paper and put out as much propaganda. I mean, everybody has their right to their own opinion, but I wanted to just share with you on how much work our employees in the park department, the police department do on an everyday basis. This individual made some statements saying that there's a rash of needles and drug paraphernalia in our parks. In some areas, there might be, in a lot of areas, there are parts of the park that aren't city property, but our employees do go out there, take care of the situation, and notify the police department. To say that the police department and the park department are not on top of whatever issue this individual has started is ludicrous, and we have one of the best supervisors in our department who's on top of things and is on a regular basis contacting the police department to let them know of any, anything that's going on in our parks. You know, I know it's election time, and there are certain groups out there that are gonna try to destroy any good that's happened in the city of Waterbury. I mean, this individual came out and said that we're focusing more on investment than protecting our parks. That's just ludicrous. Part of protecting our parks is, you know, as the mayor said when he took over, and what we have said for the last 30 years, the neglect that has went on, in some cases because we weren't funding or we should have been funding, and in some cases, we weren't getting the community involved with us, you know, that's the situation that we found ourselves in. But when this administration took over and the park board, I wasn't on the board at the time, but from what I've understood from people on the park board, you know, one of the main things after the mayor did his tour of all the parks was working with the park board, working with the citizens in the neighborhoods, collaborating, if you see something, say something. And, you know, this is just rhetoric. It's constant rhetoric coming from this individual and many other individuals, and it'd probably be coming out with more rhetoric over the next few weeks until the election is over. But let me make it clear. Our department is doing the best job, and you saw how great of a job they did with the gathering this weekend. Do I think we need more staff? Absolutely. It'd be an understatement to say that we don't need, but we do the best we can on what we have, and they've done more than what any department in their size has been able to do, and I greatly appreciate that as a board member. So, you know, we saw at the last meeting with the rhetoric and everything, and I, there's nothing I could do to stop that other than I'm gonna take it upon myself, I'm looking at maybe starting a PAC to take on the anti-Waterbury establishment, the little group that's out there, because we can no longer go back to the old days.
One minute, Mr. Pelletier.
And lastly, you know, to speak about the rhetoric that was talked about, a great person such as Frank Montero, on the night that we are gonna be, the night before we're gonna be honoring such a wonderful individual who has done so much for the city, and I know that that place is probably gonna be packed tomorrow at the AquaTurf, and rightfully so. There's not a single person in this city that hasn't been touched by the generosity and outgiving that Frank Montero and other business leaders in the city have done. And I would hope that if everybody has a chance to get to the AquaTurf tomorrow, you know, it's sad to see over the last couple of weeks that, you know, we're gonna be losing two very distinguished employers in the city of Waterbury who've done so much, Mr. Smith and Mr. Montero, but something tells me even though they might not take a full role in their company, they'll still be involved like they've always been in Waterbury, and I think it's up to us as a city to support them, so-
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Thank you. With that, the next order of business would be the approval of minutes for the meeting of Monday, September 11, 2017. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of Monday, September 11.
Second. Made by Alderman Chiketti and seconded by Alderman Napoli. Are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries, the minutes are passed. With that, we would get to the mayor's report. Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, everyone. Couple of comments, and then we'll talk about the budget situation. First of all, I appreciate Commissioner Pelletier's passion for the parks and the article that was in yesterday's paper. The fact is, I'll take a different approach. It certainly points to the epidemic that's going on in Waterbury, Connecticut, and across the country. It's an opioid crisis. It's at levels that no one ever anticipated could happen. As you know, the city of Waterbury has taken an active role in fighting the epidemic, and fact is, in a 65-acre park, the only thing that wasn't reported was that the drug paraphernalia that was found was an extraordinarily remote area of the park where children, quite frankly, would not be playing or be exposed to. Having said that, it is what it is, and our park department people, as Commissioner Pelletier properly pointed out, do the best they can every day to keep the parks in the pristine condition that they've brought them to. You heard speaking tonight on the proposed moratorium on the phone, telecommunications towers, Corporation Council and Assistant Corporation Council are here tonight and certainly be here to answer your questions. I would only impress upon you that what the city of Waterbury is trying to do is trying to get at the table to have a say in what's happening, but that can all be explained to you by the attorneys. Lastly, as you know, we still don't have a state budget, but we are going to be sending out tax bills for automobiles. Waterbury, like many other municipalities throughout the state, was waiting for the budget to be approved because we're getting some of these mixed messages out of Hartford, so you might recall the governor's first proposed budget did not include the motor vehicle grant. The revised governor's budget did improve the, did include the motor vehicle grant, but instead of going to 32 mils as what was proposed and passed last year statutorily, the governor proposed that the mill rate stay at 37. The Democratic caucus came out with their version of the budget and kept the grant as well. Same thing Governor Malloy proposed, instead of going to 32, to keep the mill rate at 37. The Republican budget that ultimately passed eliminated the motor vehicle grant, and so as a result, Governor Malloy has steadfastly stated, and I guess it's gonna happen tomorrow or the next day, he has every intention of vetoing the Republican budget. We sent out the tax bills, we sent the tax bills to the printers, I believe Friday, if not Friday, this morning, and we've asked that the bills be printed representing a 37 mill rate. We're not sure how it's gonna end up, although I have had conversations with both sides of the aisle, both the Democratic side of the aisle, the Republican side of the aisle, and the gotten assurances that there will be plenty of room to negotiate. So I don't know what that means, but since we don't have an added budget for 89 days, I'm not sure what the timeframe of those negotiations could be or will be. In the meantime, we do have a responsibility to run city government, we have a cash, we don't want to run into a cash flow problem, and so the bills are going out at 37. So worst-case scenario, the grant gets eliminated, and again, this is the worst-case scenario. And I was saying this is what's gonna happen, because I don't believe it will. Then we would have to do an amended bill in January and adjust accordingly to a 60.21 mill rate. Best-case scenario, the language remains, and we get through this fiscal year at a 37 mill rate, which of course provides substantial savings to the people of Waterbury, and then hopefully there'll be some conversation about stabilizing the mill rate for motor vehicle owners in all cities and towns impacted in the next session. So let's see what happens, but either way, I wanted to inform you that is what's happening. I guess, unless you have any questions for me, I'm going to let you get on with your evening. I know you have a pretty short agenda, so I don't want to hold you up. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
With that, there's just a couple of items that you should see in front of you. So item, item number four on the agenda, new business, has been withdrawn by the proponents, so we no longer have to consider that this evening. There are two items to add to the agenda, item number eight, which is the communication from the Veterans Committee that Mr. Dorr spoke about earlier, and we have a, an amendment from the Department of Health with respect to a contract for WIC, which they are hoping to extend for 90 days to take it throughout the end of this year, but that contract is slated to expire the end of this month, and so they had planned to bring it to us at the October meeting, but unfortunately, that would be too late to be able to amend the contract to continue it, so they've asked to add it on and have us consider it this evening. So I would propose that we add items number eight and nine to the agenda, refer number eight intergovernmental and number nine to finance.
So moved.
Second. Motion having been made and seconded, I believe by Alderman Padula and Alderman Napoli. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries and the items are added. With that, we'll recess into committees. There's not that many items, we'll do both out here this evening. Let's start with intergovernmental and then go to finance. Thank you.
Good evening. We'll call tonight's intergovernmental meeting to order. First item on the agenda is item number five from Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance, City of Waterbury, requesting approval of an agreement between the City of Waterbury and Northwest Regional Workforce Investment Board for administration, compliance, and enforcement of Section 3 of the Housing and Urban Development Act of 1968 as amended. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve item five.
Second.
Discussion. Any questions for Mr. LeBlanc? Hearing none, I have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, Mr. LeBlanc. Mr. LeBlanc, can you stay up for item six? Next item on the agenda is item number six from Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance, requesting approval of the following: Purchase and Sale Agreement to Sell 21 Johnson Street to the Housing Authority, Willow Grove Rehabilitation, and an amendment to redevelop agreement dated on June 23, 2015. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. Alderwoman Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When will these revitalization projects kick off?
I really couldn't speak to a specific date in all timeframe. I think the next step in the process is to move forward with the closing on these parcels, in this case as well as the other one. They're components of a larger plan of redevelopment. I think as far as getting to the answer of those type of questions, it may be best to request the purchaser, in this case, the Waterbury Housing Authority representative to come speak to that as far as their projected timeframe.
Is there a representative available tonight?
There is not.
Okay. My other question is, do you know if they have coordinated with the police department or anything like that? When I was doing my ride-along with the police department, there were different lots that had been purchased by different housing agencies or nonprofits that were left unattended and being utilized for criminal activity. I just want to make sure that we are looking at the best way possible to prevent some of that, you know, bringing all the heads to the table to see what creative ideas that each department may have to ensure that nothing bad goes on in these parcels.
Corporation Council, Linda Whitby was just advising me that with, with these redevelopment amendments, they establish essentially a two-year timeframe going forward for the expectation that it would be within that two-year period that progress would occur as it relates to the redevelopments. I think as it relates to the comments on maintaining these properties upon acquisition until such time, either the properties are demolished or redeveloped, that certainly-
until such time either the properties are demolished or redeveloped, that certainly it would be good to make sure the lines of communication are open between the city representatives addressing these type matters and these housing agencies that are acquiring these properties.
Will you ensure that that happens? Or have somebody ensure that those lines of communication are fostered?
Certainly, I'll, I'll make sure to do that.
Great, thank you.
Further discussion, Alderman Chiketti.
Thank you. Mr. LeBlanc, 21 Johnson Street, 24 Adams Street, items six and seven, are those going back on the tax rolls?
In all likelihood, not in their current conditions, the properties, you know, it would be my understanding that these properties would be demolished and they would become redeveloped through the actions of the agencies, the housing agencies that are administering. And I apologize for interconnecting the two agenda items. Again, there's one for the Housing Authority and one for Adams Street. At the end of the day, they, the redeveloped property that comes about would be a component. Again, in their, in their current state, they, you know, these are, in these examples, they're all currently non-tax income generating properties. They're in a nonproductive state. Once they are redeveloped based on the, if they fall into a low-income category, housing category, they'll be taxed accordingly based on that arrangement. I'm not intimately familiar with the calculation mechanism, but some portion of it will be taxable, yes.
Thank you.
Further questions? Hearing none, I have a motion to approve in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. One more for you, Mr. LeBlanc. Next item on the agenda is item number seven, Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance, requesting approval of the following: a purchase and sale agreement to sell 24 Adams Street, a vacant lot, to Waterbury Housing Services of Greater Waterbury, Inc. Have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Hearing none, we have a motion to approve in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last item on the agenda is item number eight from the Greater Veterans Committee of Waterbury, Robert Dorr, Secretary, and a call on Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd make a recommendation that we approve item one, and item two, it deals with the green, so we should send that to the park board. So the motion is to approve item one and send item two to the park board for approval.
Discussion. Hearing none, we have motion approved in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Excuse me, Alderman, Chairman.
The one question I have, are these veterans, is this, this is the item for the Veterans Memorial, correct? We recently placed a monument at Veterans Memorial Park, are all of those names going to be on this plaque, and would those names also be placed on the monument downtown?
As far as we know, well, okay, thank you, that's all I, all I had. Alderman Chiketti?
There, there's, there's not going to be any names on the green. The plaque will go in City Hall and Chase, there's two, I think, they're going into the buildings with the names. There are no names going downtown on the green, on the, on the old monument. We're just going to replace the people and recognize the conflicts that they fought in, that's all.
Understood, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to, I'm sure I speak for the board, but we should definitely thank the members of the Waterbury Veterans Memorial Committee. We're very fortunate, the City of Waterbury have such an organization that really passes along the memory of our deceased members of the military and care for the veterans of the City of Waterbury. And we're known really around the state and some places around the country as the most patriotic city in the nation, and it's really because of the group itself, the Waterbury Veterans Memorial Committee, who keeps the memories alive for all of us. Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, item eight passes. That concludes our business for the evening, can I have a motion?
So, second.
We are adjourned.
I call the Finance Committee meeting to order. Item number three, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve an emergency management performance grant, sub, grant, sub grant award in the amount of $109,676, of which is $54,838. This federal spending, and federal funding, and $54,838 is sub grant T-match, as submitted by Adam S. Rinko, Director of Emergency Management.
So moved?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item number nine, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve an amendment to Department of Public Health, log number 2013-0055-4, contract to increase funding and extend the end of the contract by 92 days from September 30, 2017 to December 2017, as submitted by William Quinn, Director of Health.
So moved?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Seeing...
Mr. Chairman, is there anyone here from the Public Health Department?
State your name, please.
Cynthia Vatone, I'm the Assistant Director.
Just a quick question, so the document states that all documents should have been returned by September 15th, was that all accomplished?
We need the authorization of the mayor on the contract to return. We received correspondence from the State Department of Health on September 12 asking for us to turn around the amendment, but of course, it requires due process.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $13,897.97.
So moved?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Do we actually have someone here to discuss? Is this the...
This is the tax.
Tax, not the same.
No.
My apologies, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All business, item number one, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends approval of a proposed ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium on applications related to the installation, alteration, and relocation of wireless community, communications facilities within public rights of way in the City of Waterbury, submitted by Nicholas R. Bemani, Assistant Corporation Counsel, interim.
I move to approve all item, all business item number one.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Alderman Giacomo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure, perhaps Attorney Bemati would be best to answer the questions. I guess I'll give him a moment. Thank you, Attorney, as always, for joining us. I guess, I have to be perfectly honest, full disclosure, this wasn't something that I even realized was an issue until I saw it on the agenda and then the subsequent article in the paper the other day. What is the city's, I guess to put it simply, maybe oversimplify, what is the city's worry? Why do we feel a need for this moratorium? Is there, are we getting a rush of applications or being told that things are going to be built soon and we want to put a stop to it until we kind of understand what's going on?
Basically right. We've been getting some inquiries from not only telecommunications provider, carriers themselves, like the Verizons, the AT&amp;Ts, but also, not quite middlemen, but their infrastructure providers. So there's other companies who will install these poles and provide the ability for carriers to use their equipment on the poles to push out these smaller range data signals. So yes, we, we've seen an influx of these across the whole United States for some time, but more recently across the state.
And is the concern, I know in the article, I think there was a couple of things that were possible concerns, I think safety was one of them, some potential inconvenience of structures and appearance. What are the safety concerns that the city has?
Well, these, so let me just back up for a second. This is a temporary moratorium, so we're talking six months here. We do not believe that this type of moratorium is, that this board cannot enact this moratorium based on federal law. Again, it's, it's six months, and it's limited in scope to the public right of way. So applications to install these facilities in, on utility poles or new poles in the streets, in the sidewalks, and we just don't know enough about what this equipment actually entails, what, what the actual construction entails, what the maintenance entails, how these things are powered, how, how we're going to be able to communicate with whoever's responsible for this, these equipment. If a new pole goes up, it gets hit by a car, falls down into the middle of the road, are they going to come to us, whoever's at the scene of the accident? We're, we're going to be the ones who get the first call. So really, for the public health, safety, welfare, in that respect, we want to have an ability to look at the full range of authority that the local municipalities have and be able to weigh in on these installations and, and to the extent possible, regulate so that there's some guidelines for, for these types of concerns.
But I guess, so as you said, we, we don't know if, if they're a safety issue, in other words, to use your example, if there's an accident and a pole falls and this equipment's on the pole, we're not sure if it poses a risk if somebody approaches it or something like that? I mean, isn't it already a risk with a downed power line? And wouldn't either, you know, the, the electric provider, or in this case, if there was some equipment, the wireless provider that has that equipment on there have to be notified and people sort of common sense know to stay away from that equipment, or no?
You'd hope so.
I mean, and the reason I'm kind of focusing on safety initially is I know we, it was mentioned appearance, and I think maybe inconvenience. As far as appearance, I mean, as you said, that they would be going on either existing or, or new poles, are these in residential neighborhoods? Have these proposals been proposed for, you know, quiet resident, or more, as you said, public rights of way where there's already numerous poles and, and power lines and things like that, where perhaps telephone transformers or other sort of equipment already exists? I mean, when we talk about appearance, is, what type of appearance are we worried about when there's already an existing pole?
Well, I think there's less of a worry for existing poles. I, I don't think there's any limitation that these attachments cannot go in residential areas, but if, if new poles are proposed, then these, these types of poles, at least that we've seen go up in places across the state, across the country, are much larger than your typical utility pole. And, and that requires a much larger foundation, it's going to be in the middle of the sidewalk. I mean, aesthetically, it would stand out, but our main concern is from a safety standpoint, obstruction of the streets, obstruction of the sidewalks.
When you say obstruction, you mean, again, getting back to your example of a downed pole, or the pole itself would be so big that it would obstruct a street?
It could be.
And we've seen that in other municipalities or towns where a pole has obstructed a right of way or a street?
Arguably, it has obstructed. We could provide, we could provide pictures, happy to.
Well, yeah, that would definitely, I would, I would love to see that, and again, only because until I saw this on the agenda that came out last week in the article, I didn't know it was a concern, and, and other than this proposal for the moratorium, you know, I'm trying to sort of understand it a little more. You know, it's, it's sort of surprising when you think about, you know, a provider would put a pole up that would obstruct a street or a right of way. As far as the comments or concerns about being in violation of any federal statutes or anything like that, you mentioned that before, that's not a concern to you or the city?
Not in as limited of an extent as we're proposing right now. Again, with, with a six-month timeframe and, and limited to these applications in the public way, we're not banning these things, we're not prohibiting them outright. We're asking for a six-month period of time to assess the full extent of, of the legal authority that's out there and try to get a better process locally.
Now, I, I believe the, the article in the Republican American had mentioned that there was a provider or a carrier who, I believe it said, caused a bit of a stir in Connecticut because it had notified some cities and towns that had planned to put some equipment in place, and that Waterbury was one of them, that there may have been as many as 30 sites, but we weren't sure what those sites were or were for that, that proposal that was mentioned in the article.
I, I don't know exactly where the sites were proposed, and that, as, as far as I know, that... that, those proposed sites have since been withdrawn from the city.
Okay, so that 2016 stir, if you will, to borrow the phrase from the article, is no longer a concern?
It's not an active concern, there hasn't been any formal applications made since then.
And I guess the other thing that sort of got me thinking was, I guess, I don't know the exact timeframe, as I said, the article only said 2016, I suppose it could have been late 2016, but we're asking for six months to understand it better, but if, and again, going on slim information, if the article is to be believed, we sort of have known about this since at least 2016 when that wireless carrier had notified a bunch of cities and towns that was planning on doing this, and we're saying that in that time, since that original stir was created, we still don't understand it enough and we need another six months just to continue to study it and talk about it?
Well, not only that, but there are, at this point, at the FCC level, a number of rulemaking hearings and, I'm not sure exactly how you would describe it at the FCC level, but there's additional decisions that the FCC will make that's going to provide additional guidance on this specific issue, that issue being what the local town's authority is for applications in the public right-of-way. And in addition, we hope at least to work with the rest of the Connecticut municipalities to propose Connecticut-specific legislation.
Do any other, have any other municipalities imposed this type of moratorium?
Not in Connecticut.
That we know of, not in Connecticut? And so we're, we would be the first, and then we would be trying to talk some of our other cities and towns into joining us and passing some sort of statewide moratorium?
Uh, I don't know that it would be a statewide moratorium, but at least more defined laws when it comes to who is the final approval authority for these types of applications.
And I guess, again, the purpose, correct me if I'm wrong, again, it seems to be, well, we just want to understand it better, what's going to happen, so we need six more months. And it sounds like if Attorney Bogan is to be believed, that the industry knows that it needs to be a sort of, a good corporate citizen, a good industry citizen, and work with cities and towns, and that they'd be willing to talk to and help cities and towns understand what they want to do and understand the technology and work with us, or, you know, Waterbury or any other town in Connecticut, with this process, if he's to be believed, and I don't see any reason why not, but we feel that we need this moratorium rather than just sitting down and working with them along with this process without some sort of moratorium in place?
The existing process that could bring these providers to the table when it comes to consulting with the municipalities isn't strong enough at this point.
And so we're sort of trying to force that hand into either making it stronger or putting this in place and sort of putting them on notice that they have to work with us and talk to us?
I think the city wants the best and most effective ability to have a cooperative relationship with the carriers. That's going to become something of a routine in the future presumably, if this is where the future's headed.
I appreciate your time, thank you.
Sure.
Alderman Chairman?
Thank you. My question is concerning whether or not this will affect the city itself. We have implemented a private wireless bridge between, I believe, the building across the street and one of the firehouses. Is this something that would affect the city or private businesses that want to do something similar with their own private wireless bridge?
I don't believe so. This is limited, or at least geared more towards small cell and distributed antenna systems, which are, what's currently being sought by these private, I'm sorry, not private, these telecommunications providers. Small cells, essentially, instead of the large cellphone towers that you see everywhere, these small cell units have less of a range, but more of a capacity, and really, I think the intent is to allow more customers to use the data and get a cell signal in a given area. This isn't going to limit any private capabilities or expansion.
Would this affect, say, the immaculate conception from putting a cell tower on their property, on their roof, or any other private property?
No, this is limited specifically to the public right-of-way, which is the roadways, the sidewalks.
Understood, thank you very much.
Sure.
Further discussion? Alderman Giacomo?
Yes, me over here. Mr. Bemati, who's going to decide where these towers are going to go? Right now, what agency says yes or no?
New towers or attachments to utility poles?
The attachments to the utility poles, for starters.
Right now, PURA has been the authority that, in its own interpretation of state law, has decided that it is the approving authority for those types of applications. And I think the city, as well as some of the other cities in the state, might question that interpretation.
Well, Waterbury have a chance to say where we want them and where we don't want them?
Well, based on a recent decision by PURA earlier this summer, part of the process it has outlined for reviewing and approving these applications at the PURA level is that a municipal consultation is necessary. But there is nothing to say that PURA is going to give that any real weight, any real credence to its final decision. And that's our whole point. We want a stronger ability to weigh in on the city's concerns as to where these locations should or should not go.
Well, I resent anybody trying to come into our city and tell us where they're going to put things, like cell towers or anything else. That's why we have this board, and that's why we have zoning and all the other boards that we have in the city of Waterbury. Have these people from the companies, the providers, come to Waterbury and ask to sit down and talk to us about this?
I believe early, late 2016, the one company that did present some locations around town had, it wasn't as cooperative of an experience there. I believe a number of the city departments basically received some maps that, based on this company's determination of where the most usage was in town, they just plopped some points down on a map without any real consideration to where that fits in with the overall landscape of the city.
That's not right. What are you going to do as the Corporation Counsel's office to get the people to come to the table to negotiate at least where we're going to place towers or antennas? And I'm sure there's more than one company also, right?
Theoretically, it could be. At this point, at least my understanding, we have had the most relationship with one of the companies in particular, but I know other...
Have they been willing to negotiate with us?
Uh, that, I don't know. I haven't heard, I speak to that one company just as making applications at some point for sites, but as far as a willingness to negotiate, I can't speak to that.
Because our neighborhoods are our strength in this city, and we just can't have people coming in and putting large towers, starting out with the small ones, I've seen the pictures here in the handouts, but sooner or later, the technology, we're going to need more and more of these things, and it seems like then we're going to have cell towers, if you will, in our neighborhoods, and that's wrong. And I think you're going to see the vast majority of the neighborhood council and all the community clubs are going to fight this to the end. So, keep up the good work, let's put the moratorium in and see where we go from there, and hopefully the people, they'll come and try to negotiate with us. I'm sure they negotiated when they built towers on farmers' property in Litchfield, in Bethlehem, and all over the state of Connecticut. But when it comes to a city now, they're just going to come in and place them wherever they want in our public rights of way. That's wrong. Please keep up the fight.
I guess I'm going to piggyback off of his questions. Is there a limit to the amount of poles they can put on one street, new poles?
Not that I'm aware of.
So they could throw poles anywhere they want in the city and we can't stop them or regulate them?
It would be up to PURA's decision on how many poles they could be limited to. But no, like I said, I don't know of any specific cap.
Do you have any idea how many poles they want to add? Are they looking to, you know, use our infrastructure already have? Are they looking to build new poles?
Again, I'm not too sure of the specifics, but when we did receive some interest back in late 2016, I want to say there were between twenty and thirty locations, which included new poles and attachments to existing utility poles.
Who is going to own the pole?
Well, typically, the utilities own the existing poles that are in the public rights of way. If it's a new pole, it would be owned by that telecom provider or that service provider.
And what's their response time? As far as I know, I know our pole goes down in the city, they're pretty quick. I'm worried about a telecom that's not local. Who's going to do the repair work?
I think that's our worry as well.
Well, I mean, I have a problem. I don't see a problem with a six-month waiting period either, just because the fact that they can throw a pole anywhere they want in the city, or as many as they want on a road, and it's not regulated, that's, that's a problem. I mean, I don't, you know, I see a big problem with that as far as not, come to the city, give us a location, we'll give you an idea where you can put it, or we'll pick the spot. But I can't see them, you know, adding five or six poles to a city street, or a city street, so, thank you.
Further discussion?
Thank you. In six months, if we don't have these questions answered, are we going to be looking for another six-month moratorium?
It's possible.
It sounds like we have no answers really concerning the size of what can be put there now, who's going to control what's put where. I understand the six-month moratorium to an extent, but if we don't feel as though we're going to be able to get those questions answered.
I mean, again, I don't have any definitive timeframe for when the FCC is going to issue its rulemakings, and like I said, we're hoping to propose more guidance at a local level with the state legislature, as far as black and white law goes. In terms of building up a relationship with the carriers within the next six months, I think that would be another benefit of having this period of time before having, having to deal with incoming applications, before there's actually this kind of a process or relationship in place.
So we're not essentially going to deny any applications, we're going to hold them off six months with this moratorium, is that the case?
Correct. We're not going to consider, we're not going to formally receive or accept or provide any input on these types of applications for six months.
And there, but there is federal regulation that states that we cannot hold up this type of development? What happens when one of these private entities decides to file suit against the city because of this?
We'll defend the suit, and I think we have reasonable grounds to defend the suit. Again, the federal laws speak more to blanket prohibitions. This is not what we're doing here.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Alderman Giacomo?
Thank you. Mr. Bogan, are you hearing us?
Yes, sir.
Are you taking notes? Are you willing to come back and negotiate with the city of Waterbury?
I believe I made that error.
It didn't sound that way, but I'm hoping that you come to the table because you're going to mess up our neighborhoods with poles everywhere, and we don't want that, sir.
Yes.
Yes? Step right up.
I apologize if I was less than clear because I thought I ended my comments by saying we invited the opportunity to work with you. We view ourselves as partners. I'm very also, also very familiar with the company that was referenced earlier, they are also an individual client of mine.
How many companies do you personally represent?
Well, I certainly represent the collective, which are the companies you're familiar with. That is, CTIA represents the interest of Verizon Wireless, AT&amp;T, Sprint, T-Mobile, as well as other wireless proposal, uh, company. The company that was discussed earlier with respect to new poles in 2016 was mobility. Mobility, since that time though, because you also heard, haven't heard anything since then, they revised their business plan. Their near-term plan is just as Verizon Wireless has done, because Verizon Wireless to date is the company that has installed most of these small cells, and they have had over two-hundred-and-fifty applications approved. They are attachments to existing utility poles.
Do they drive into our neighborhoods and see what they're doing? Has anybody gone into the neighborhoods before this last plan from 2016 was presented?
Certainly with regard to the wireless industry, absolutely. It doesn't do any of us any good to come in and disrupt your neighborhood. All they are trying to do is serve their customers and they try to do it...
I understand that because you're making money!
Well, wait a minute, they don't make any money if they continuously fight you. So they are always looking to partner with you. With regard to who approves it, it's either PURA or it is the Siding Council, and that's just the way the law is, but they're not looking to come in and ride roughshod over you. And one other point with regard to the moratorium that needs to be made blatantly clear, the federal law says that there is a shot clock. The shot clock says that on colocation applications, those are applications to install facilities on existing poles, jurisdictions have ninety days. If it is a new pole, jurisdictions have one-hundred-and-forty days, I mean, one-hundred-and-fifty days. And I think it would be helpful, if I may, just to read one quote, because I think you need some perspective. "The Supreme Court found that Congress imposed specific limitations on the judicial authority of state and local governments to regulate the location, construction, and modification of wireless telecommunications facilities. The Telecommunications Act implements Congress's intent to encourage the rapid deployment of wireless telecommunications and seeks to stop local authorities from keeping wireless providers tied up in the hearing process through the invocation of state procedures, moratoria, or gimmicks."
I don't, I don't think that's the intent here of the Corporation Counsel's Office or the Board of Alman to stop all this, but I think we should have a say as to where you're going to put them.
Well, and like I said, we are more than willing to work with you...
You've got to come to the table, sir.
And I said that before I even sat down the first time, and I apologize if I didn't make myself clear.
Didn't seem like the Corporation Counsel's Office thought that.
Well, the Corporation Counsel also thinks a six-month moratorium is appropriate, and I just told you, under the shot clock, it is not.
Well, we're going to take a vote, we'll see if it's appropriate. Thank you.
I have a question.
Alderman Pugnula?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions, maybe Nick could answer for us. Thank you, Attorney Bemati. What types of proposals do you think that the General Assembly is going to entertain on this, and how will you seek the guidance of the industry and the other towns? Because once you open it up to a legislative proposal, the first thing that can happen to be effective would probably be July 1st of next year, which is quite a long time from now, before anything can be effective. So what would be the game plan to bring everyone in the room and get legislation written and then have it effective in a reasonable period of time?
Well, I think at this point, we already have some buy-in from some of the other municipalities just based on our conversations with, for instance, Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, the Connecticut Association of Municipal Attorneys. I mean, there's a willingness there at this point. As to the specifics, I don't know yet. I mean, we need to, that's part of why we're asking for some time is to really explore what the best way to go... what the best way to go about formalizing this process at the local level would be and amongst the municipalities in a way that the municipalities would agree upon and say is the best way for everyone.
Okay. Now, with the different locations that might be available, say for new towers to go up, new poles, with this moratorium, there might be additional competition for the specific locations. There might be very hot locations that all the different providers would like to put a pole. How does the city intend on ranking them if the applications aren't going to be considered in chronological order, for example? If a utility wanted a specific location or a corner to put a pole, and now you're going to not allow that application to be filed, so how are you going to rank the different providers as to where they're going to be placing these poles?
I mean, I think that's a question that deserves looking at. I don't know, frankly, but I will say that due to the nature of these small cells, one of these types of telecommunications equipment, it's possible that multiple small cell facilities are installed on one pole. And those multiple small cells could provide service for different carriers. So, I mean, that may address some of the concern for overlapping and fighting for prime areas. But as far as how the city is going to rank those types of applications, if we even get those types of competing applications, I don't know.
The other issue I had, I'm not sure if it's addressed in any of the more technical literature, but anytime a cell tower or repeater goes up somewhere as a proposal, a lot of the neighbors usually come out and they try to provide scientific data on the elevated RF that goes into the air. Because these are transmitters and receivers that are now going to be much lower to the ground than a usual cell tower that we're used to seeing, have those concerns about elevated RF radio frequency energy been debunked or have they been satisfied as far as people's health and safety?
I mean, everyone is certainly able to have their own opinion, but I think it's safe to say that, at least from the FCC's perspective, those have been debunked so far as the FCC has somewhat formally stated that it has its own regulations for RF requirements and it has the sole authority to regulate for those purposes and that states or cities can't even get into more specific regulations for those emissions purposes.
I've been down to the testing center in Melville. I got a nice private tour and got some testing of some equipment one time, so I guess if they meet part B, then I'd be satisfied. Thank you.
Can I get a, Mr. Bogan, would you, you know, can I ask you one more question, sir? Would you mind coming up? I just, you say you're willing to work with us, and then two seconds later, you know, you cite Supreme Court law and you basically wave the finger at us that I have the law on my side. So are you willing to work with us or are you just willing to, you know, throw the federal statutes at us and say we're going to lose no matter what?
No, no, and I apologize once again if I'm not very clear.
Because it's twice you did say it.
Well, there's no question that my clients are willing to work with you. What I was trying to suggest by referencing the law is that in the context of the six-month moratorium, it doesn't work with the federal law. That's nothing to do with my client's willingness to work with you. Look, I make more money if I fight, but I've also learned that I'm better off in the long term if I make my clients happy. My clients are happy if they get cell sites up, which means they spend less time fighting with you and they satisfy their customers. So the answer to your question is, my clients are looking to work with you so that they can get cell sites up.
Okay. Because my concern is, you know, we've got tough winters here. The more poles up on the side of these roads are more poles that are going to come down in every accident we have all winter long. And that's a, it's a huge safety concern. I guess if, you know, I would assume that was our biggest safety concern is a pole coming down during, I guess, a winter storm and we do have a pole fixed, but the fact that you can put 10 or 20 up on a street is disturbing. I mean, I don't want to come into your backyard and plant trees all over your backyard. I think you would be offended. And, you know, that's what we're looking to do. We're looking to maybe have a little say, or most of the say, what goes up in our city. So I hope you understand and we're not trying to, I guess, fight you either. We'd like to get it done, but the new poles to me is a problem. I like to see it on existing structures, but, but again, every time you walk away, you seem to throw that last jab that, you know, I had the federal law on my side. So I just want to, if we're going to work together, I have no problem. I don't see a six-month waiting period being a big problem, but again, I just, you know, either we'll work together or, you know, I'd like to see us work together and get the city moving forward, so, thank you.
We want to work together. And just so that we're clear, remember I said Verizon Wireless has over 250 of these that are already in service or approved and in construction. They're on existing poles. Those are existing electric distribution poles. The overwhelming majority of what we're talking about here are existing poles, but the problem is with the moratorium, even those would be barred. That's the issue.
Right. But again, like I said, I don't have an issue with the existing. I have an existing with the new poles being placed wherever you guys want them and, you know, it should be placed where we want them or a study should be done over the place.
But understand, the moratorium doesn't draw that distinction.
I understand, I understand. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
For Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Bogan, can I just have a, I just have a follow-up question, if I may, please? Just want to make sure that I heard something correct. Did you just, did you just state that the companies or those that you represent make money when they're not fighting with us?
No, I said they don't make money when they're fighting with you because they don't have a cell site up.
Right. So is this, in your eyes, is this considered fighting? Or are we, are we just, you know, we are the legislative body of the city, you know, we represent about 110,000 individuals and it is our right, in the common goal of the betterment of our city, to bring these things up. So for us, this is just having a cordial conversation. It's getting to a point that these conversations need to be had before things get done. So I was just curious as to why did you connect the, you know, not making money to fighting?
Well, first of all, again, forgive me if it was a poor metaphor. When I said fighting, I meant arguing, disagreeing, because in that context, cell sites are not getting up, customers are not being served. That is what I meant when I used the connection between making money and disagreeing.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? I need a motion.
Oh, yes. Aye. We had a motion and it was second.
Okay. Now I'm asking for a vote.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
With that, we'll return to the regular order of business. The following items are on the consent calendar. Item number three is on consent to approve an emergency management performance grant, sub-grant, award in the amount of $109,676, of which $54,838 is federal funding and $54,838 is a sub-grantee match. Item number four is withdrawn. Item number five is on consent to approve the agreement between the City of Waterbury and Northwest Regional Workforce Investment Board for Administration, Compliance, and Enforcement of Section 3 of the Housing and Urban Development Act of 1968 is amended. Item number six is on consent to approve a purchase and sale agreement to sell 21 Johnson Street to the Housing Authority Willow Grove Vitalization and an amendment to the redevelopment agreement dated June 23, 2015. Item number seven is on consent to approve a purchase and sale agreement to sell 24 Adams Street vacant lot to Neighborhood Housing Services of Waterbury Incorporated, to approve an amendment to purchase and sale agreement dated April 2, 2015, and to approve an amendment to the redevelopment agreement dated July 15, 2015. Item number eight is on consent to approve the Waterbury Veterans Memorial Committee request to install the 16 by 20 inch bronze plaque with the names of the six men from Waterbury who have given their lives in the global war on terrorism to be installed in the Chase Building. And with respect to the, item number two, within new business item number eight, to refer to the Parks Commission, the request from the Veterans Memorial Committee to inscribe on the war memorial on the green two updates which will list the conflicts men and women from Waterbury have served in since Vietnam. Item number nine is on consent to approve amendment to number 2013-0055, the contract period October 1, 2012 through September 30, 2017, with respect to the contract for WIC with the Department of Public Health. Old business item number one is on consent to approve a proposed ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium on all applications related to the installation, alteration, and relocation of wireless communication facilities within the public rights of way in the City of Waterbury. Is there a, any changes or deletions to the consent calendar? Alderman Padula?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to pull old business number one, please.
Any other changes? Hearing none, is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar with the deletion of old business item number one?
Motion to approve the consent calendar is read.
Second.
Made by Alderman Chiketti, seconded by Alderman Napoli. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. A yes vote would be to approve and a no vote would be to disapprove.
Alderman Bernelli?
Yes.
Alderman Chiketti?
Yes.
Alderwoman Cummings?
Yes.
Alderwoman Cotto?
Yes.
Alderman DiGiovan Carlo?
Yes.
Alderman Giacomi?
Yes.
Alderman Guerrero?
Yes.
Alderman Hadley?
Yes.
Alderman Kula?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy?
Yes.
Alderman Napoli?
Yes.
Alderman Padula?
Yes.
Alderman Sherman?
Yes.
Alderman Purnaruski?
Yes.
Fifteen approved consent calendar.
The motion carries. The consent calendar is approved. With respect to old business item number one, the chair would recognize Alderman Hadley as Chair of the Finance Committee.
Mr. President, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing over-
I'm sorry, old business item number one. It's the moratorium ordinance.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. President, the Board of Finance, the Finance Committee respectfully recommends approval of proposed ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium on all applications related to the installation, authorization, and relocation of wireless communication facilities within public rights of way in the City of Waterbury, submitted by Nicholas Bomonte.
So moved? Second. Motion made by Alderman Lopez, seconded by Alderman DiGiovan Carlo. Is there any discussion? Alderman Padula?
Thanks again, Mr. President. In looking at the, you know, documentation provided by the industry groups and the representatives and listening to the discussion tonight, the comments of Mr. Bomonte, it appears to me that the main issue here is the location of this new equipment being installed throughout the City of Waterbury. A lot of times, you know, driving around the state, you see holes in cell service, you see limited data, and it doesn't only happen in remote areas, it also happens in major cities. Also, it appears to me that the main issue is the location of new poles that are going to be carrying or holding up these transmitter receivers for cell service. I would respectfully propose an amendment that the six-month moratorium, which does have a lot of merit, would apply to the installation of new towers and not to existing towers or poles in the city. If I could have a second on that, please.
Second. Who did the second? Alderman Giacomi. Motion made and seconded by Alderman Giacomi to amend the underlying motion to only impose the moratorium on new communication facilities, I'm sorry, they're all going to be new communication facilities, so what's the motion?
I would say newly constructed poles or towers.
To have the moratorium apply only to newly proposed poles or towers in the public rights of way in the City of Waterbury. The motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. A yes vote would be to approve the amendment to the underlying motion, a no vote would be to disapprove.
Alderman Bernelli?
No.
Alderman Chiketti?
No.
Alderwoman Cummings?
Yes.
Alderwoman Cotto?
No.
Alderman DiGiovan Carlo?
No.
Alderman Giacomi?
Yes.
Alderman Guerrero?
Yes.
Alderman Hadley?
No.
Alderman Kula?
No.
Alderman Lopez?
No.
Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy?
No.
Alderwoman Napoli?
No.
Alderman Padula?
Yes.
Alderman Sherman?
Yes.
Alderman Purnaruski?
No.
Ten no, five yes.
The motion fails. The underlying motion is not amended. The motion now on the floor is the approval of an ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium on all applications related to the installation, alteration, and relocation of wireless communication facilities within the public rights of way of the City of Waterbury. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, a yes vote would be to approve the ordinance, a no vote would be to disapprove the ordinance. Let's do a roll call vote.
Alderman Bernelli?
Yes.
Alderman Chiketti?
Yes.
Alderwoman Cummings?
Yes.
Alderwoman Cotto?
Yes.
Alderman DiGiovan Carlo?
Yes.
Alderman Giacomi?
Yes.
Alderman Guerrero?
Yes.
Alderman Hadley?
Yes.
Alderman Kula?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy?
Yes.
Alderman Napoli?
Yes.
Alderman Padula?
Yes.
Alderman Sherman?
Yes.
Alderman Purnaruski?
Yes.
We have 15 yes.
The motion carries. The proposed ordinance is approved. With that, we'll go to Alderman Hadley as Chairman of the Finance Committee for Standing Committee Reports.
Mr. President, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $13,897.97.
So moved? Second. Motion made by Alderman Lopez and seconded by Alderman DiGiovan Carlo. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries. The refunds are approved. Is there any further business? I think for the good of the order, with that, Alderman Bernelli?
Mr. President, I feel bad I missed the roll call. I didn't say presentate. So I'd like to call on one of my Hispanic aldermen or other woman. A quick blessing to the people in Puerto Rico and adjourn the meeting.
Gracias. Y cerramos la sesión.
Motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Thank you, we're adjourned.